Five, one councillor is not present, councillor Smith. Item number two, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three, Rules of Order. The Elsworth City Council operates under Robert's Rules of Order with modifications that are agreed upon at our organizational meeting every November. Item four, adoption of the Elsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, April 17th, 2025, regular meeting, April 3rd, 2025, special meeting. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Item five, presentation of awards. The first one is Larry Gardner.
City of Ellsworth proudly presents the Certificate of Service to Larry Gardner, a recognition of 25 years of service in the accessory department as a city assessor. His devotion to duty and loyalty to the community has contributed to the improvements of the City of Ellsworth presented this 21st day of April 2025.
And the second item is an Arbor Day proclamation. Official proclamation, whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing a habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify the community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Michelle Beale, City Council Chair for the City of Ellsworth, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Ellsworth, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generations, dated this 21st day of April 2025. Thank you. Welcome, Sarah.
Hi.
She's been here two months and she's already in.
Yes, well, good evening, councillors. I will be presenting the City Manager's Report on behalf of Charlie, who is on a well-deserved vacation right now, so I hope he's not tuning in. So I will just go over a couple of things that he outlined that he wanted me to touch on for his report. First is the budget season is nearing its conclusion. We are nearing the final finish line for the FY '26 budget. Our target was to hold increases around 2.9% to align with the 2024 Consumer Price Index inflation figure. We've been really, working really hard to hit that mark. The school budget is currently proposed around a 5% increase over last year's funding. The municipal budget is around a 1% increase over last year, and the county budget is around a 9% increase. Despite this being largely a maintenance budget, we have managed to add some meaningful investments, and these include funding a full-time Parks and Rec Director, which was a key priority from last year, and the addition of four key public safety personnel. The school budget is slated for the vote tonight, and we will be holding one more final budget workshop in the coming weeks to finalize on the municipal side. We expect to bring the full budget to council for adoption at the May meeting, which will allow staff the time needed to prepare and send out our tax bills on schedule. Additionally, we are being, we are beginning to plan for the allocation of Economic Development TIF surplus funds, with around $500,000 in new capacity created by a reduction in the district debt service and an increase in value of the TIF districts. The conversation will continue later this evening as we consider engaging a TIF consultant to help move that effort along. The courthouse collaboration. As you may have seen in the recent press release on the courthouse collaboration agreement, a major milestone outlining the land swap and road construction deal between the city and the state judiciary and the Wardwell family. This framework allows the authority granted by the council earlier this year. The next steps will include finalizing the purchase agreements with the Merrill Adams and Wardwell families for approximately 0.22 mile road for the city, that the city will construct. Once those are ready, we will begin the land acquisitions, we will bring the land acquisitions back to council for approval. The anticipated values remain within the scope of the FY '25 local road account. A detailed budget update and options for funding will follow in the near future. Some hiring updates for economic development and planning. We are thrilled to share that we have extended an offer, and it has been accepted for the Economic Development Director, so following a very competitive process that included over 40 applicants and multiple rounds of interviews. We are waiting to finalize the references and the background checks before a more detailed public announcement, but we are very confident that this individual will be transformational for the team. And the search for our next city planner has been actively underway. We began interviews today, actually, and we will hopefully be coming to a final decision in the next coming weeks on that position. The downtown facade grant program, the latest round of our downtown facade grant program received more interest and funding with its support, and a testament to the commitment of our small business owners to invest in and enhance the downtown experience for residents and visitors alike. We are proud to partner in this work, and we will be exploring ways to extend the program in the future. Beautification in parks investments, we all know this is one of Charlie's very, very proud projects. Planning is underway for the plantings along Main Street, High Street, the Marina, Norton Park, and City Hall, just ahead of Memorial Day. A special thank you to Caleb from the Highway Department, who not only helps in road operation, but coordinates our beautification program, the paperwork, the planning, and the planting included. To save funds, we are assembling our own hanging baskets and planters, and we would love volunteers for help. If interested residents could email Charlie directly at cpearce@elsaworthmain.gov. But to be fair, I just want to warn you all that he probably will make you do some weeding as well. In addition to parks improvements, and additional parks improvements include new playground equipment being installed, the splash pad resurfacing, a proposed $50,000 investment in Norton Park upgrades in the FY '26 budget, and we're transitioning to a year-round maintenance staff for parks and recreation areas, replacing our seasonal framework right now. And last, roadwork. Paving season has officially begun, and there are two major components. We have our city-funded work, which was totaling around $1.6 million, which the bid was awarded earlier this winter. The focus areas have been in the summer zones like the Harbor Marina and Boggy Brook Road near DeMyers Field, which is going to be the site of a Little League tournament later this, or early in the summer. So we wanted to get those locations done first. Many thanks to Mike Harris, Amanda Rae, and our Public Works and Highway teams for preparing those sites to make this happen. The other major work is state-led, so High Street, Washington Junction Road, which I'm sure you've seen are, the signs up and they're being milled and filled currently, and the intersection on Bridge Hill will be underway soon. So for a full paving schedule and updates, you can visit the city website or follow us on our social media accounts. Moore has been doing a great job of keeping the public informed. And that is all. So on behalf of Charlie and the entire leadership team, thank you again for your continued support, and we're looking forward to an ambitious summer.
Any questions? Steve?
This is, I have a question, I have a comment. Since I've sat on this council, I have fielded many texts and phone calls concerning the condition of the roads, and today, for the first time, I received a call from a gentleman that was so happy to have his street paved. It was a real swing from what I have heard. I've heard other things too, about the selection of what's been paved, what hasn't been paved. I heard a comment about, why aren't we paving streets instead of Harvard Park? But for the first time, I received a positive notice from a constituent in Ellsworth that was just so happy to have their road paved, and so overdue. The question I have is, as you mentioned, that there had been a hire or an offer. Could you share for the record the salary of this hire?
I'm not actually sure where we landed on that salary. Charlie and her have been going back and forth, so I'm not privy to that information. But I can find out for you, Steve.
Thank you.
And those, the pavings that you just announced, those aren't all of them. Once the budget is passed, we have several more that we're also going to be paving also, right?
Yes, that's, that's just the start of the paving for the local roads and the bond for 1.6. Northeast is doing also High Street, so they, and Mike can speak to this too, I think, but they were going to do the sensitive, seasonally sensitive areas first, and then when there's some gaps in High Street, they're going to come back to the other roads that are on our list, like Happy Town, Red Bridge, a few of the others, later in the season.
Yeah, so just really quickly, Maddox Avenue is done. It's done today, probably done today. Boggy Brook Road will be done within the next two days. It's already been, they're milling it, and we're doing adjustments, and then they should be paving it tomorrow morning. Foster Street is being milled tonight, and then that one will be paved next week, probably. So, and then West and Holden are gone. Those ones are being prepped as we speak, so those ones will be coming right up. And then the bigger pieces, so Grant Street, Upper and Lower Grant Streets are reclaimed, so that one will be later on. Happy Town Road, we're doing color work on Happy Town Road today, and we'll do some more of that this week, and then Happy Town Road, both sections of Happy Town Road will be ready to be paved. And so, yeah, I mean, it's going very well.
That's wonderful. A lot going into our roads, thank you.
And to Steve's first comment, hopefully we can keep that momentum going once we have our CIP developed, and we have a regular cadence, and we know what we need to be programming for our roads on a regular basis.
Wonderful, thank you. Committee reports. Councillor Stein?
Just jumping off of talking about the parks and the excitement about the rec department, we Recreation Commission met April 15th, and we were very excited. The commission was really very excited to hear about a rec department and rec manager. There are a lot of things that we've been trying to get done for a long time, so we think that'll help. The commission is going to launch a park day, we're still workshopping the name, it's going to be much more creative, I'm sure. May 20, maybe, May 24th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, so keep an eye on the website for updates. It was going to be a cleanup day, but since Public Works will be starting to empty trashcans, there may not be that much to clean up, so the commission wants to sort of show off the new installed equipment, hear from people who show up and get comments and suggestions. The splash pad I don't think will have been done yet, but shortly after that, so we just kind of want people to come out and check out Norton Park, and, you know, hang out in the sunshine, hopefully.
Anyone else?
Arbor Day is on Friday this week, and I'm super excited. We have my really good friend, but also my old coworker from New York City, will be up to give a talk at the Moore Center from, the event will go from 5:30 to 7:00, and he'll be talking about how to set up a tree trust here in Ellsworth. He's currently the head of the New York City Tree Trust. So to set up a tree trust, so we can put money aside for the maintenance and planting of trees for the future here in Ellsworth. So he's an incredible speaker. Anyone that comes, it does sound a little boring maybe talking about a trust, but I guarantee it'll be incredible talk, so I really encourage everyone to come.
It's at the Moore School on Thursday?
The Moore Center on Friday, from 5:30 to 7:00.
I wanted to speak about the Finance Committee meeting that we had on Friday. I think the entire group was very excited about how far we are ahead of last year with all of the work that's gone into everything. It seems that in one year's time, there has been huge progress, and everybody has worked really hard at that. And, you know, this year, when we've gone through the budget process, I think we all recognized on the committee that, you know, there's, there's lots of information available to us this year that wasn't available before. Maybe a little sadder note was when a speaker got up and spoke at the finance meeting and mentioned that there was a judgment against a family in town from the City of Ellsworth, and I asked questions about that, and nobody was very interested in talking about it. Asked questions after the meeting, no one was real interested in digging into the details. But, and it was thinking, and today, I went back today and I got some information on it. It seems that the city is enforcing an ordinance against a family, and rightfully so, but when I heard that the city had a judgment of, the speaker said, of $47,000 against a family that was in rough shape, it really set me back a lot. So I went to see that family, and today, when I went to see Sarah again, Robert gave me some information, and it seems that the gentleman speaking was in fact telling the truth, that there has been a judgment against a family for violations at their home. And it's, there was a rough number thrown out on Friday at the finance meeting of $47,000. And it appears that that is a true statement, and there is a, there was a violation, and I was saddened by that. And the reason that I'm saddened by that, I'm not saying there's not a violation. It was really sad to hear that it's come to that, and I was disappointed that we took that family to court and got this huge judgment against them that potentially could cost them their home. And I think this city needs to step up and reanalyze that, maybe find out a workout plan, because it's not fair to this family. Are they in violation? Absolutely. But I think there could be some workout that could happen. We're giving a couple hundred thousand dollars to social services here in town. We're giving money to other places constantly that are coming before us asking for money during the budget season. And to go clobber a family that's struggling with two young kids, I'm not saying they're not in violation, but that kind of a treatment is just unacceptable. I mean, we have a situation with Main Organics that we've never invited to go to court, but we're taking to court this family that's struggling to get by. That bothers me, that we don't take the time to enforce an ordinance that is violating neighbors. And in this case, this ordinance, these people are not taking care of their trash on their own property. They're affecting their own property. And we haven't ever tried to take anybody to court with our existing ordinance that's affecting a half a mile around a particular place. And I think that's unfair. I think that we need to back up and rethink this and have some level enforcement or unlevel to everybody, one of the two. This is a tragedy, and violations, yes, but if we can take this small family to court, we should be able to do the same for violators that's affecting their neighbors.
Thank you. That was not a committee report. That would have been more appropriate under councillor comments, but that's fine.
It happened at the committee.
I, well, I know, but it wasn't committee business, but anyway.
Oh, yes, it was. It was at the committee.
Okay. So I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't think most of the councillors.
Neither did I.
Okay. So that's, that will be something Sarah, can you and I talk about this after and see, get the full information and see what's happening?
Sure. Happy to do so.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to any other city committee reports? Okay. Then item number eight is citizen comments. This is the point of our meeting where we invite citizens to come to the podium, state your name, to discuss with the council anything that is not on the agenda. And if it is on the agenda, I ask that you wait until that agenda item is called. And then also, there is a three-minute timeline on this, so if anyone would like to come up and address any comments to the council? Okay?
Good evening, City Council. I am PJ Keenan with the Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce. We would just like to invite everyone to join the chamber on May 8th for our annual meeting. This is our 69th annual meeting. This is going to be a pop-up event under a Wallace tent in the YMCA parking lot. Come celebrate our top drawer winner, the Witham Family Hotels, our Citizen of the Year, Carl Lusby, the Directors Award winner, Hancock County Technical Center, our President Award winner, Mickey Sumter, and our three public voting award winners that will be announced the night of the annual meeting. Suspense. Tickets can be purchased at the chamber, on the chamber website, or by calling the chamber, and your ticket will include an amazing dinner provided by Chipper's Restaurant. So we'd love to see everybody there. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cara Armando. I'm the Director of Heart of Ellsworth. Heart of Ellsworth is thrilled to bring two festivals to Ellsworth next month, Main Seaweed Week and Janes Walk. Main Seaweed Week will take place April 25th through May 4th. This annual statewide celebration highlights Maine's vibrant seaweed harvest and robust production of seaweed-adjacent products. We're proud to be the first accredited Main Street community in Maine to be a hub for Seaweed Week. We're actually the first town and city in all of the states, so. And the event is being locally sponsored by Main Coast Sea Vegetables and Star 97.7. The celebration features 10 downtown businesses offering seaweed-inspired food specials, creative beverages, and even seaweed floral arrangements, so we're pretty excited to see that. As part of the festivities, there will be an evening seaweed market and art show on Thursday, May 1st, from 4:00 to 7:00, at the 16th State Street Makerspace Building in downtown Ellsworth, showcasing the work of eight local artists and crafters. The final weekend of seaweed event, of Seaweed Week overlaps Janes Walk, which is an international festival of free volunteer-led walking conversations. These walks invite community members to explore local history, share stories, and engage simply by walking and talking with community members and community leaders. We're proud to share that Ellsworth will host six Janes Walks this year in collaborations with nonprofits, local residents, and even some of you on the council. Thank you, councillor White. And nearly 50 walks will take place statewide on Saturday, May 3rd, and Ellsworth is tied for second place along with Westbrook for the most made walks in Maine, just after Portland. These festivities are a wonderful celebration of Ellsworth's creativity, community spirit, and connection to the wider state. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Shea. I live on 42 School Street in Ellsworth. I've used to live in Clinton, Maine for a while, and I understand how hard it is to work through the budget process, because I had to do the same thing, because I was on the Parks and Rec Committee. And plus, I was involved with the community, and probably that's why you see me up here quite a bit. Anyways, more can be done to cut the budget, okay? And the city managers and the deputy city manager need to make sure and ensure that the department heads are using vehicles efficiently, utilizing, making sure that they're not idling too much, okay? And that our hard-earned tax dollars are being spent properly. Kudos to the City Public Works Department for trying to stay ahead of the many places that we have, but maybe we ought to take some time also when we're doing some of these streets that have sidewalks that should be put back in place so that city residents don't have to walk up and down the street. I, I see them all the time, and they're not using the sidewalks, okay? And some of them even take a shortcut across my property, so. Maybe also if city manager and a deputy manager could also have the signs improved around the old burial grounds, okay? And also a sign out to Woodbine and any other cemeteries that we're supposed to take care of, informing residents that dogs really shouldn't be allowed in hallowed grounds. If they go through, that's fine, but dogs do need to defecate and urinate. That's not really good when you see somebody doing stuff that they shouldn't do in a cemetery. And they also should post, we should post the hours, because state law says you're not allowed to be in a cemetery from sundown to sunrise. But they leave it up to the cities and towns to govern that, okay? But again, thank you for the hard work that you're doing, and you've got more work to be done. We need to make sure our property taxes don't go up. Granted, there's always a bunch of nonprofits coming along, got their hand out, but we don't need to have duplication of services like good Parks and Rec, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Great. Item number nine, councillor comments. Anything outside of the agenda that councillor would like to talk to?
Just following up, I think probably some, like, emergency vehicles need to remain idling by law or by, you know, their SOPs, but maybe we could look into other vehicles? I thought that was a great idea from Patrick. It's, you know, it's a little, but it can go a long way.
Yes, we will look into that, for sure. Thank you.
Councillor Allen?
I think one of the things that I have learned through the budget process is that it has been the best in the four years I've been here, and I commend everybody for what has gone on. And sometimes I feel like I need to dig more to get information, and sometimes that is hard to do, but it's been the best it's been since I've been here. And I would invite next year, every presentation to build off this presentation of this year, because I think it's been pretty darn good. Transparency is key, and I think this year, there's been more transparency than in the past years, and I think that's a great thing for the City of Ellsworth. Even if it doesn't look the best, transparency is important. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item number 10, public hearing in action on the applications for renewal for the following licenses. Ellsworth Hampton Inn, for Down East Highway, for renewal of a city lodging house license. Ellsworth Moose Lodge, number 269847 Foster Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, virtual liquor and amusement, and renewal of a state liquor license. Twin Hills Cottages of Acadia, 210 Twin Hill Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. Take these ones first. Oh, yeah, thank you. This is a public hearing. Sorry, I know. This is a public hearing, so I'm open to the public hearing if anyone would like to speak on these three businesses. Okay, not? Hearing is closed. Tell council what would you like to do. Tim?
What approval of the renewal of the applications as presented?
Further discussion? All those in favor? And for new businesses? 207 Collectibles LLC, DBA Ellsworth Candlepin 207 Collectibles LLC, DBA Ellsworth Candlepin Alley, 25 Eastford Lane, Suite 6 for a new city Class B license, victual or liquor and amusement. Acadia Provisions, 425 High Street for a new city Class C license, victual or liquor, and a new state on-premise beer and wine liquor license. Pentacle LLC, DBA Tyconic, 78 Down East Highway for a new city Class C license, victual or liquor, and new state on-premise beer and wine liquor license. These are new businesses. Are there people representing? One, two, which gentleman in back, which, which business? That would be you, yeah.
Me?
Yeah?
Tyconic.
Tyconic, okay. And you, sir?
Acadia Provisions.
Acadia Provisions? Pentacle, I mean, what was it, 207 Collectibles? Does that need to have representation as a new business?
Well, it's, it's up to interpretation, I guess.
To liquor and amusement?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, not here representing. So why don't, why don't we take that one separately? I'll open the public hearing for all three of these, but let's do the vote individually on these. Okay. So open the public hearing on these three businesses. Want to speak? Close the public hearing. Let's take Acadia Provisions first. More approval? Discussion?
I'd like to just hear a couple of sentences about the changes.
Acadia Provisions? Absolutely. Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Tell us, come up to the podium.
Hi.
I'm Matt. I'm the manager at Acadia Provisions, and I'll be managing the liquor license as well. We're just looking to add, you know, on-premise beer and wine to our cafe. We've got a designated area, and it'll, you know, remain in the cafe side of the store, but it just, you know, gives people another option while they're waiting for a sandwich, you know? Sit down and have a, have a beer, can of wine.
That's great.
Yeah.
But I apologize. Is the cafe fairly new, or?
So we, I mean, it's definitely expanded recently, but, I mean, we've been doing it since we've been open. Yeah, so it's just a license adjustment for us.
It's delicious, by the way.
I know.
Beer. I didn't know beer. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it sounds really great. For a second, all those in favor, this license? The next is Pentacle LLC, DBA Tyconic. A second?
Second. Also like to hear just a couple of sentences.
And discussion, would you like to stand up, sir, and just tell us about your business?
So I'm just a manager over there. Your first time in this city, coffee, whatever you call it. But I'll be exciting to get the Thai food, which you guys already have it, but I just bring more authentic to it, more kind of, you know, like, New York, Washington DC style to it. Make a little more exciting is pretty much it.
78 Down East Highway. Oh, it used to be Sam's Sky.
Yeah, Sam's Sky, formerly, yeah, Sam's Sky.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
When, how soon, how soon will it open?
Toward the end of, I'm trying to push, pushing slowly. Want to make sure that, you know, all the stuff, a lot of going on. So we try to open as soon as possible. I need money to... Spend a lot of money, especially, they take a lot of deposits for the electric power, $4,000 or $5,000.
Oh, there we go.
They were prepared.
So to, to be clear, sir, to be clear, towards the end of April or May?
This month, April.
Okay, great.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Chalk me.
We have a motion on the table. All those in favor? So the last is 207 Collectible LLC. Who isn't a person? Move to table, move to table. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? You can't discuss on the table. All those in favor? Sarah, if, if they need to have this sooner rather than later, if you'd let us know, we can...
Yes, we can talk with the applicant and find out if there is a reason they weren't here and if they need it, you know, when they're planning, and expedite it as quick as possible.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I've found it's usually made clear to new businesses that they need to be there.
They need to be there.
At the first one, but sometimes not. Okay.
And could I ask a question?
You can now, yeah, now that the vote's stopped.
Is it clear that is, that all new people have to be here, or is this a renewal?
It's not a renewal.
It's not a renewal?
It's a different, it's a, it's a different person. Oh, goodness.
Oh, you've got the Buddha.
Well, yeah, tomorrow it'll probably be back.
I bet.
But anyway, Sue McLean, City Clerk. It's, it's technically a new owner for the candlepin portion of it. He owned, this, this gentleman owned the 207 Collectibles, but not, he didn't run the candlepin section. And he is now. The, the prior manager or owner is no longer there, so he's taking it over. So it's, it's technically new.
And it's a new liquor license then because it's a new owner?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry to make you walk up there.
No, that's, it's fine.
It's my fault. I'll take responsibility.
It is your fault, Steve.
I'm gonna carry the microphone, too.
Thank you. Item number 11, council order number 042500, presentation from the Ellsworth Police Department on loitering policies sponsored by Councilor O'Halloran. Would you like to speak first?
I would, thank you.
For news, Chief of Police.
Time out. I'd like to just say something first. I asked this to be on the agenda for one reason, as, and it came from a finance meeting that Maine Coast Mall, whatever the parent company is, had spoke at a finance meeting about that subject. And I turned to Charlie and said, "Well, it seems like it's a concern. Could we cut that on an agenda in April?" So that's what's driving this conversation. So I, I really don't have a passion about this either way, but I thought it was fair that if, if a taxpayer has a concern, that we at least learn about it.
So you're talking about the homeless behind the mall? Is that what you're talking about?
No, there was an incident that they spoke of that, and I don't know all the details, but there was a solicitor in the street, and this speaker had said that the solicitor was driven off the street onto private property, and he was upset about that. So that's what drove this conversation. I, I don't, I don't know that I have an opinion either way, but I think that it's important to at least learn about these people in the streets with the signs. And I think that's what drove the whole thing.
So, yeah, so I did a little bit of research. So our Chapter 11, Used Streets, Section 113 addresses loitering ordinance throughout the city. So basically, it just says, "No person shall loiter in any street, place, doorway, store after being ordered by the police to move." That, that's the extent of our loitering ordinance in the city. And that was added to our ordinance in May of 1976. We, as a police department, we don't, we enforce what we, the criminal trespass laws, basically, for somebody, if somebody calls about somebody being on their property, we would give them a warning for trespass. The owner doesn't want it, he needs to move on. With the exception of homeless, there's a separate protocol for homeless that we have to follow. We have different guidelines for that. But what you're talking about, so we've all seen the people on the, in the medians with the signs. There's been several cities. The main one is Portland, who's tried to address this loitering. I think back in 2013, they proposed an ordinance to do away with, do away with the median sign, begging for money, if you will, whatever they're begging for. That was taken to court, and they ended up losing. Basically, it was deemed a violation of First Amendment rights, freedom of speech. It cost the city of Portland $175,000. So what you're talking about, so if people are moved on off private property, or if they're moved on, if they're blocking or impeding traffic or violating any other laws, we can obviously address that. The incident you're talking about, if somebody was asked to move from someplace and they went on, I don't believe they were intentionally driven onto their property. They might have wandered on it.
I just, this came up, and I'm like, let's just put it on the agenda, so, because I've heard discussions about this before, about this loitering business and standing in the medians. And like I said, I'm not sure that I have a preference either way. I just thought that we, we ought to have at least a conversation about that.
I'll tell you, see, we have very, very few complaints about that. Occasionally, somebody will call about it. We explain to them that there's really not much we can do about it unless they're actively walking up your car and asking you for something, or impeding traffic, or unsafe, or in some way. We don't, we don't have many complaints about that. So, I, yeah, I mean, if there was more of a specific question from, from the person, they're more than welcome to call the police department, call me, call the deputy chief of the captain. We'd sit down, we'll talk to them about it.
The gentleman that spoke is in the audience. Maybe you could shed some light. And I, I'm not talking about one incident. I had heard this many times. And I'm not sure that I, I don't know what I have for a feeling on that because if people need, they need. And however they choose to survive is how they choose to survive. But that's the only reason it's on the agenda is from...
Right, and, and quite honestly, I mean, I could obviously answer a question or two, but I want to get into a discussion about what's going on on his personal, on his private property. And I'd rather sit down and have a conversation with the police department, but...
I, I think that is very, very appropriate, that have a conversation to fix an issue rather than a public argument. But did you have some questions other than?
Could he at least state?
Come on up, no, that's all right. Come on up.
Jared Wilbur, resident. So back in 2013, the city of Portland digges sue over that. Since then, a lot of municipalities have moved to different verbiage in their ordinances about this sort of stuff. And it's not about taking away anybody's rights to freedom of speech or anything like that, but these municipalities are putting in these ordinances with verbiage to make sure that high pat, or high, intersections with high accidents rate, there isn't loitering there. A, to protect the person in the median, and also to make sure that the person in automobile, you know... One of the intersections, they have to drive, cross three lanes of traffic, and you got three lanes on the other side. If there was an accident, if somebody gets rear-ended and somebody's on the median, their first instinct is gonna be go to the right or the left. Well, then all of a sudden, they're jumping into oncoming traffic. Last June, Bangor implemented an ordinance that said that medians, there's no loitering whatsoever. If individuals want to have their signs and express their whatever on the sidewalk, and however they want it, they can. But as far as like, in the medians, in high-impact accident areas, Bangor has implemented, and Sanford has as well. I'm not, you know, I believe everybody can do whatever they want, but at the same time, I think that we need to look into it as far as the safety is of the person doing what they're doing, and making sure that the pedestrians and the people in their cars are able to navigate through town without anybody getting hurt. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just say ordinance-wise, it's up to you guys. It's not really something that, I mean, once you develop one, we would, we would enforce it. I just kind of threw that one example out there to you, it's kind of the extreme. So to what Jared was talking about, in my 35 years, I've never seen anybody with the scenario you have to get run over in an intersection on those medians. So I don't really, I don't know where that is coming from. Obviously, if we were in the area where it was unsafe, or we thought there was a problem, or people were calling, we would address it.
So you don't get a lot of calls about that?
No.
You don't? That's all we need to hear, I believe.
Well, I did a little bit of research on this because I wasn't entirely sure what we were gonna talk about, but I was struck by, as you mentioned, Portland's action and review of ordinance and then lawsuit. The ACLU ended up suing and winning, and part of the byline of that was a quote that I wrote down, which was, "They said that this would restrict free speech out of the guise of safety." It sounded like there wasn't actually a safety issue, but maybe there could have been. But what was important was what this was taking away from people's rights. And it, it seems if we're worried about these people's safety, maybe we're worried about poverty, maybe we're worried about homelessness, an ordinance that would seek to set fines, as Bangor did, would be really fighting these people rather than fighting the poverty that they're dealing with and the homelessness that they're dealing with. So yes, walkability, yes, safety, yes, sidewalks and, and crosswalks and infrastructure like that. But I think until we hear that there's an actual issue of safety in the streets, if we, if we want to, you know, help people that are asking for things, there's other, better ways to do that.
I mean, I, I think if we were having a, a real issue with safety with these people in every intersection, and we're at our wits' end and how to deal with it, we would be coming to you to try to establish some sort of an ordinance. Obviously, it's gonna require, you know, legal counsel to get an ordinance, so we don't end up getting sued. But, I mean, I kind of agree with John. I mean, it's really not an issue for us at this point.
Councilor Hallen?
I am not for fines, period. I, I realize these people are in crisis. But I needed to bring this before for the comments that were made. It's good to hear that there's, we haven't, there hasn't been anybody hit that you remember from doing this in the median of the road and all that.
I wouldn't say it couldn't happen, but no, it hasn't.
That's good to hear. Good to hear.
So we'll continue to monitor complaints and if there is an incident, and bring it back for you if that does occur.
That would be great. Thank you very much. That's what I think.
Oh, someone else wants to speak.
Come on up, that's my...
I'm sorry. I'm gonna throw you under the bus. There's been a lot of loitering. And under Maine's distracted driving law, sometimes some of these people up by those intersections, up by Myrick Way and other locations, cause people to look the other way, and they're not paying attention to where they're driving. Bad enough, they're also looking at their cell phone. 21 years working for Maine DOT, I've seen a lot. And I've worked with law enforcement on the interstate and side roads, okay? For as you're loitering and stuff, hmm, I call the business number because no sense bothering to call 911 because that's for emergencies. These people make a concerted effort not to live anything but often whatever financial assistance the city gives or anything else, okay? There's homelessness out there, and some of them just choose not to do anything but pour meat. I know this because I talked with them. And one of the patrol sergeants told me this. One of the patrol sergeants also told me that it is policy to move along.
Mr. Shane?
This is a discussion.
Mr. Shane, this is a discussion on loitering, not what the cause is.
But the loitering, the loitering is there.
The police just said it wasn't an issue. So, thank you for your comments.
The loitering is definitely there. We've seen it. Whether or not it's an issue that we need to create an ordinance for, for safety, that's another discussion that we're going to watch.
The ordinance is already there. I agree with Counselor Hallen. I really don't like to input fines in it. But a little bit more, all you can do is, you can see it. You don't have to go out there and hunt for them. They're there. Hiding around behind dumpsters, they're getting into stuff, and throwing their trash around. Okay?
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay. Moving on?
Not all of us do.
I know. People have a thinking, so that's...
They sure do.
Counsel Order Number, Agenda Number 12. Counsel Order Number 042501, Public Hearing in Action on the Ellsworth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2026. A, Order Approving State-Local EPS Funding Allocation for Public Education from Pre-Kindergarten to Grade 12 for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2026. Order Approving Non-State Funded School Construction Debt Service for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2026. Order Raising and Appropriating Additional Local Funds for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2026. Order Approving Total School Operating Budget for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2026. Order Appropriating and Raising Funds for Adult Education for FY 2026 as required by the Maine Revised Statutes Title 20A MRSAs, Section 8602-A1. Order to Raise Local Funds for Food Service in the Ellsworth Public Schools for FY 2026. Order to Authorize Expenditure of Grants and Other Receipts for School Department Programs. Order to Authorize the Establishment of Reserves from Fund Balance of Funds at Year End. Order to Authorize the Addition to Reserves from Balance of Funds at Year End. And Order Authorizing Disposition of Additional State Subsidy. We have a description of this Council Order with the dollar amounts that will be read in the motion. I do want to add that the Order to Authorize the Establishment of Reserves from Balance, from Fund Bal, from Balance of Funds at Year End, with their fund balance, that is $100,000 for student and staff support technology. That's to put into a reserve for that. And $15,000 for a reserve for food services to offset the increased costs of food for the children. And then the order, I Order to Authorize the Addition to Reserves from Balance of Funds at Year End, that's $50,000 for special ed for rising tuition costs. The Superintendent of Schools is here, if we'd like, have any questions, or before I open the public hearing? She's talked a lot to us. All right. Well, then I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to come to the microphone, ask questions, comments? All right. Public hearing is closed.
Get ready. Just getting some water. Hold on, this is a long one.
Washes hydrated. Say, I won't make a big speech or anything, but for those of you who don't watch the budget hearings, but who do watch City Council, and who are watching online now, if you're curious, if you're interested, go back and watch these videos. There's, you know, six or seven hours of conversation. You can watch it in 1.5 speed mode, like I do. Get it all in. You know, there's dozens of hours about budget within the whole city, but of the school, there's, there's a lot. And it's fascinating, and it's interesting, and it's, some of it is a little scary. And I think we did a great job asking questions. And I think the Superintendent and the school had great support and did a great job presenting. So I'm, I'm proud of, of them and us and the whole, the whole city for getting this together.
I think if Charlie were here, he would echo that and also say it's been a really great partnership with the school, this budget cycle. I think we really have worked, this has been my first municipal budget cycle, so I had a lot to learn in this process. But it's my understanding that we really rode together through this. And I think it just made for overall budget, better budget process. So, thank you to the School Department for working with us on all the budget.
Does somebody want to? Counselor Hallen?
I'd just like to go on the record that I am going to abstain from this vote. My wife works for the School Department, and I don't think it's fair that I vote. This would be the fourth year in a row that I have abstained. And one year, John, I didn't make that clear upfront, and John wondered why I was not voting. My wife is employed there, and I don't think it's fair that I vote on that subject, because somewhere down into that budget, there's a paycheck that comes into my household. I'll remain silent.
Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate that.
Anybody have any things before I start?
There you go.
Okay. Do I just read it all at one time, or do we, we have to vote on each piece? Correct?
First, four, and then the other.
Okay.
Thanks, Evan.
Don't mess up.
Now you're making me nervous. Counsel Order Number 042501A, ordered that the city will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, and to see what sum the municipality will raise of the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. In accordance with the Maine Revised Statutes Title 20A, Section 15688, the School Board recommends $8,173,085.
Discussion? All those in favor abstaining?
Counsel Order Number 042501B, ordered that the city will raise and appropriate for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state funded school construction projects, or non-state funded portion of school construction projects in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12. The School Board recommends $75,023.57.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor abstaining?
Counsel Order Number 042501C, ordered that the city of Ellsworth raise and appropriate $6,624,474.25 in additional local funds, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by $6,624,474.25, as required to fund the budget recommended by the School Board. The School Board recommends $6,624,474.25 for additional local funds and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential program and services funding model by $6,624,474.25. This amount is needed to cover the School Department's expenses that are not recognized or fully funded by the state's funding model, facilities, maintenance costs, special education costs, technology costs, transportation costs, professional development costs, and system administration costs.
Oh, my gosh. Am I going to have to say that? Six million?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor abstention?
City Council Order Number 042501D, ordered that the city of Ellsworth authorize the School Board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the Maine Revised Statutes Title 20A, Section 15690, unexpendable balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. Recommended $32,4,754.69.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor abstention? So the rest of it can be done in one, right?
Get ready, people.
Do you want a break, Dan?
Oh, yeah. At the bottom, that bottom paragraph. Nope. That one. Yeah.
All right. Her break's over. Give it back.
Council Order Number 042501E, ordered that the city of Ellsworth appropriate $266,084 for adult education and raise $266,084 as the local share, with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest, in the interest and for all the well-being of the adult education program. Council Order Number 042501F, ordered that the city authorizes the sum of $272,719.23 hereby raised for all other expenditures, parentheses, the food service program, for fiscal year 2025, 26, and that the Ellsworth School Department is authorized to expend any unexpendable balances and additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest of and for the well-being of the food service program. Council Order Number 042501G, ordered that in addition to amounts approved for the fiscal year 2025, 26, school operating budget, the School Board be hereby authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditures of other funds not appropriated for the school operating budget. Council Order Number 042501H, ordered that the city authorizes the School Board to appropriate funds for the ending balance of the school general operating funds for fiscal year 2024, 2025, to establish a reserve for unanticipated students and staff support cost, and authorize the School Board to expend those funds. Recommended $100,000. Council Order Number 042501H, ordered that the city authorizes the School Board to appropriate funds from the ending balance of the school general operating funds for fiscal year 2024, 2025, to establish a reserve for unanticipated food service costs, and authorizes the School Board to expend those funds. Recommended $15,000. Council Orders Number 042501I, ordered that the city authorizes the School Board to appropriate funds from the ending balance of the school general operating funds for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, to increase the existing revenue for unanticipated special education costs, and authorizes the School Board to expend those funds. Recommended $50,000. And last but not least, Council Order Number 042501J, ordered that in the event that the Ellsworth School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, the School Board would be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes and cost center categories approved by the School Board, increase the allocation of finances and reserve fund approved by the School Board, and/or decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Title 20-A, Section 15671-A, Subparagraph 1, Subparagraph B, or local property taxes for funding public education as approved by the School Board. Suggested motion, move to approve Council Orders Number 042501E, F, G, H, I, and J as written.
Thank you. Second? Thank you for reading that. We have a motion and a second discussion? All those in favor? And abstention?
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate the collaboration that we've had this year. Charlie and Sarah both, and their finance team has been gracious with us with their time, and going back and forth and being transparent with one another of where the total budget sits. I also want to, you know, say, to Steve's point, the city side worked really, really hard so that we would meet our timeline. So you should be very proud of that, because this is the first time where you'll be able to vote on our budget and know the overall impact to the city taxpayers. So we're really proud of that collaborative, collaboration. So thank you very much for your time and efforts in getting this budget through. Thank you.
Thank you, and everyone at the School Department.
Yes, I want to thank my team at School Vacation Week. And so the ones that are not on vacation and in a sunnier location all came tonight. And I definitely want to thank my Assistant Superintendent Nikki Chan, and my two finance managers, Carolyn Heller and my accounting manager, Amy Atherton, because we wouldn't have gotten through the finish line without them, and of course, our School Board. So thank you, you guys, also. Thank you.
Exit, exit door, right?
Chair, buddy.
I love you.
Right on.
Bye, Charlie.
Okay. All right. Agenda Item 14. Council Order 042503, requested the Public Works Director to amend the current contract with no... He skipped me. I did? Yeah. Oh, I am so sorry. You know what? It's in all the stuff of the School Department. I'm sorry. You're used to me. All right. Okay, let's go to Agenda Item 13. Council Order Number 042502, Public Hearing in Action on the Request of the Arbor Commission for Amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code Ordinance, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 43, Tree Ordinance.
Hi.
Hi.
City Council, Casey Hansen, Ellsworth, Maine. I am bringing back the tree ordinance, which you all hopefully remember from January. So just, I'll just briefly say that this tree ordinance was originally made back in 1991, but it was very limited. So when the Arbor Commission came back into being, a couple of years ago, one of our goals and things that we were tasked with was to update the tree ordinance. So, we brought it in January, and there were just a few things that needed to be, or you guys requested to be adjusted, which we agreed with. And then we worked on it. Some of it is little stuff I won't go over, like changing the name town to city or things like that. But the biggest, the biggest thing that needed to be changed, as Counselor Lyons had pointed out, is that, actually, I'll go back a little bit just to say, what does the tree ordinance say? It defines the tree warden, which we have always had, at least in the time that I've been here. It defines the Arbor Commission, which we have. But then the thing that needed specific work was permits. And so, just to remind us that we're really talking only about protecting trees that are on city property. So this isn't about trees that are on your own private property. They're city trees. And we had plans for a permit for people who, let's say there's a city tree in your yard or something like that, for anybody who wanted to do either tree removal or tree pruning. And we had suggested a permit, but we were not specific about what were the parameters around which it is okay to make adjustments to trees, be it removal or be it pruning. So hopefully, you can see in your packet now that we have added this, basically this addendum, one for tree removal approval standards, and one for tree pruning approval standards. And those are taken, Tabitha, tell me if I'm right, from the American National Standards Institute, right?
Yeah.
That's where that information came from. Also, in your packet is a proposed tree work permit application, but that's actually not part of this ordinance. That goes in a permit ordinance. So it's kind of a whole separate thing. The only thing I'm bringing here today is the tree ordinance.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Would the permit be, would you go through the regular permitting department, the code enforcement office, to receive that permit?
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah.
It references the code department, I believe, in the ordinance.
Yes, it does.
I believe ultimately, the warden issues the code.
So the warden would be issuing a violation, correct? That would go to the Board of Appeals?
The, the permit isn't a violation.
Right, right, right. But just trying to, I think Code was asking a couple of questions about this and their role in it. And, because he, he wasn't aware of this, so I brought him into it today. Sorry. So just trying to clarify what, in, in, in practical use, what it would look like for the code.
So, actually, in the cities that I've worked in that have tree wardens, which most New England towns, actually, all New England towns, I believe, have to have a tree warden, it's, it actually doesn't go through code enforcement. It goes right through the tree warden themselves. They're the ones that are typically licensed as an arborist and can make those... They're the ones that are typically licensed as an arborist and can make those determinations on if a tree is dead, dying, diseased, what limb should come out, and so on, sure. The, I don't know.
Article three, three. Three, one, yeah, three, one and three, three.
Yeah.
Warden works with the Arbor Commission to enforce and administer provisions of this ordinance.
Do we put in code? Three point, no, any person or organization, including the Arbor Commission, may appeal in writing any ruling or order issued by the tree warden by filing a notice of appeal with the Board of Appeals. Is there-
And in the permit section, it doesn't indicate who would be issuing the permit?
We could specify that. We could certainly specify that in Article five point one, a permit is required for any activity related to public trees and landscaping plans on public property, we could say, a permit.
The only thing that I would say, maybe I'm wrong, but what, the tree warden, it says that any person or organization can appeal, it says that he works with the Arbor Commission to enforce and administer the provisions of this ordinance, but is there anything specific we need to do to give him the power to do that?
I think this ordinance gives him the power to do it.
It does, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
And a tree warden in general, right now, has the power, as it is, to remove and prune?
Yeah, I think this is talking about violations.
Yeah, I think this, you know, there's a, kind of a comparison, in some municipalities, they give their harbor masters the ability to enforce violations of the harbor ordinance, and then that's appealed to the Board of Appeals, and then eventually it could go to court. I think it's similar, the way it's structured here, is we're giving the tree warden a very limited scope of authority to enforce, you know, these, this ordinance, which only applies to, as I read it and confirms, just to trees that are in the public way or on public property, so it's very, they can't, any trees on my property, the warden doesn't have any authority, it's just for public trees. So here, it's if there's a violate, you know, any kind of alleged violation, the alleged violator has the right to appeal that to the Board of Appeals. I think what, yeah, clarifying that authority makes a lot of, just making that clear, that can be a pretty easy fix as far as-
Just clarifying that it is the warden who would give the permit, basically.
Give the permit, but also, you know, apply, you know, any form of enforcement-
Yeah.
-as it relates to the scope of the authority on this ordinance.
I can't figure out what, I'm sitting here thinking, because if they came onto public property and cut down a tree, that's a criminal event, it's not a-
It's also trespass, too.
It's also trespass.
So, but there'd be, there'd be both. This is also us being able to be like, you know, yeah, if you cut down the tree, we can, but then once they make them plant a new tree, then they got to do it under the requirements.
Under the, this, okay.
That's how I would read it.
Yeah, so two point six does say about the tree warden, that officials shall enforce all laws relating to the preservation and maintenance of public shade trees and public trees, so I think that's in there. I think the thing we could add is Article five and specify that the permit comes from the tree warden.
Yeah, I could say a permit issued by the tree warden is required for any activity, so I think just put it after a permit issued by the tree warden. What should I, Mike?
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry. I was reading.
My care is Public Works Director. Just probably for the audience and everybody else, who's the tree warden?
Charlie. Currently Charlie.
So Charlie, so people are going to be coming directly to Charlie to do all this?
Hopefully Charlie will not be the tree warden. That's, we want to change who the tree warden is, we want them to be, Arbor Commission's recommendation is that it's a certified arborist that would, that would hold that.
I just wanted to-
I know.
He is doing flowers.
It's going to be heartbreaking if you take that away from him.
Access to Charlie can be trying, so I just want to make sure.
For as long as I've known, I know the city manager has always been the tree warden.
Yeah, and I think that's really part, honestly, part of the reason to update the ordinance, because it's always been this kind of like, ha, 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 the city manager's the tree warden, it's not a real thing, and we're trying to make it actually.
Actually, it was.
It is a real thing.
Oh, it was, going out with people, inspecting trees and figuring out if they're on public property or if they're on private property, and whose responsibility they were, and it was a lot.
It's a lot.
It was more than you would think it was.
And I think it dovetails with, I know, as you guys are working through the budget and thinking about the way trees and parks are being managed in the city, I think, I think these things go together.
Yeah. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, this, does the council- this is a public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing, does anyone have any questions or comments on what you've heard about the ordinance? Mr. Shea?
Yeah.
There you go.
Patrick Shea, President of Ellsworth. Like I said before, I was on the Parks and Rec Committee and Board, they were two separate things, and then we folded it into just Board, we answered the selectmen. We, the chairman of the Parks and Rec Board was the tree warden. We maintain green spaces, walking trails, two balls, two baseball fields, basketball court, river park. So if you ever drive down through, towards Waterville, Fairfield, take Route one hundred, and you'll see the gazebo that we put there by the waterfront, okay? But we, it was hard crafting the ordinance as far as the trees, because some of the trees were actually on the other side of the sidewalk, which was actually in our right-of-ways, so. And then there were certain instances where neighbors would get into something, kind of, eh, you cut down my tree, we didn't, you know? So we'd send the park, the highway foreman to go take a look at it, and he'd report back to us.
Thank you.
Steve, you're supposed to keep the mic. I'm doing it on my own, Steve. I just had a quick question, just because I don't understand, but what is an example of why somebody would need a permit in this case? Because it sounds like the trees are on public property, so I'm not sure, I just don't understand why you would need one.
I think people don't always know that a tree that they think is on their property is actually in the right-of-way, so it's those ones that people don't know it doesn't belong to them.
Okay.
Oh, instance that I ran into a lot, in Boston and New York, it's curb, curb cuts, for instance, a curb cut needs to go in, and-
I, I got it, I got it, Steve.
This is a ride.
Like a curb cut might need to be cut, and there's a tree that's right next to a new driveway that, that is being proposed.
Okay.
As a city tree, you may be cutting off a significant portion of the roots, or you might want to prune in order to get the clearance, or something like that.
Okay, all right, I was just confused and-
It's not often that that happens, I think maybe more with construction, that we would see permits being pulled for, for trees, but-
Sounds good.
Don't walk by that, you ride on the way back.
Oh, my God, she's on-
You ride on the way back.
There we go.
There we go.
And I think they're aside.
There you go, Mike.
We're also working-
Wait a minute, if we do, if you could, just a minute, if you could stay in that chair, because I'm going to ask a question, and I want to see you come back.
Oh, good Lord.
Can I say one, one thing about, we have a community tree steward this year, and he is, one of his major projects is to figure out the Ellsworth right-of-ways and what trees we actually own, which is amazing, because it's important for us to know which trees are ours, if we can want to enforce this.
Yeah, you literally just took the words right out of my mouth, I was going to mention that, that this dovetails with that process as well, so it'll be really easy for us to indicate to people what is it within the right-of-way and what isn't, so it'll go nice with this new ordinance.
I think it's also important for the city to know what trees are the city's, because we're also responsible for those trees, so if, you know, there's any-
Disease.
Disease or risk or anything, we want to know, this is our tree, we have the responsibility to maintain it, to avoid any issues.
We're going to see that soon enough with this Emerald Ash Board, where the city actually has plenty of trees that they own that are ash trees, and that's a decision, we have to decide if we want to protect them or cut them down, but, yeah, we just want to, we want to highlight the trees and make sure that they're cared for, thought about, thought about seriously when it comes to maintaining them and building here in Ellsworth, so.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yep, go ahead, the public hearing's still open.
I'm not pushing you, that's fine. Both of my legs work still, mostly.
Robert Grant, Code Enforcement Officer. I read this tonight for the first time, and I had a question about Article nine, the violations and penalties, it says that it may result in fines and penalties for any violations, but it's not specific at all in what that might be, other than it may, it may be, penalty shall include, but may not be limited to, the replacement value of the tree, but it doesn't spell out how we might assess that fine, if it, who would it be, if we go to court to do that, like, everything in the code enforcement office, as we heard earlier, goes to court to get the, the fine assessed. So there's nothing, there's no language in here at all about how that fine would be assessed, and there's no, you know, it's, that worries me a little bit that that's not in here, as far as what that additional fine might be. And then, and then, where it says, in the beginning, it says that it's appealable to the Board of Appeals, it also says here in your tree removal standards, that citizens may appeal to the Arbor Commission.
Okay.
So, that needs to be-
Fixed.
Fixed, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't, I'm not sure if this is actually being, this place is actually being voted on tonight.
It is, maybe, I swear.
So, I think that's all I have, just a couple of bookkeeping.
So in nine point two, we do send you to calculate it as specified in the city's forestry management plan when it comes to the replacement value-
Okay.
-of the tree, so we are addressing that currently in our forestry management plan, that we plan to bring forward to the council at some point, I don't know necessarily for approval, I'm sure, I guess, to, to use it as a reference.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, no, go ahead, I was just-
No, I, I can make sure that you're definitely included in that part, I should have included you before, Robert.
That's all right.
I'm very sorry.
I'm, I'm really busy, so it doesn't break my mind.
Thank you for coming and, and commenting, though.
But I just, I just wanted to, because it mentions fines and penalties, and it does outline that penalty where you have to do the replacement cost of the tree-
Yeah.
-but it says it may not be limited to that, and you don't list any other, you know-
Yes.
-fine or penalty, other than the replacement cost, so I just was wondering what that might be and how you might determine that.
I think I have a fix for that. In nine point one, it says violations of this ordinance may result in fines and penalties, and then I would, I would propose we add, comma, pursuant to thirty A, MRS, Section forty-four fifty-two.
That would-
That's, that's the one.
That's the one, yeah.
I think you suggested that last month as well.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing, that's what we should add.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say, we put that, we, I know because I wrote down, Patrick wants us to say blah, 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 but I guess I missed the letters and the numbers after.
Well, blah, blah, blah.
In my notes, I wrote dot, dot, dot.
Well, I'm happy to add it in right now, and what was the section, Robert, you cited where it said appeal to the-
Oh, that was part of that, the attachment, the-
Oh, it was in the attachment.
The tree removal approval standards, the last line in Section four, citizens may appeal tree removal decisions through the Arbor Commission.
Yeah, so I would just cross that out, the Board of Appeals.
Correct. I mean, that's, that's what they want, they could do it either way, I guess.
No, I think if we're going to be consistent with the Board of Appeals, that's what they're for.
I'll ask a question on that, when, let's say that does happen and it goes to the Board of Appeals, and, but there's not, how do we make sure that, that, does the Arbor Commission send a member there during an appeal to, as a representative for the tree, or the tree warden would stand in, right?
Tree warden.
Would stand in, and, okay, so they would be able to give all the pertinent information about the, okay.
I, I would assume the tree warden or his, his or her designee would do that.
Stands in.
Yeah.
And then we could just make sure that, let the, let the Board know who it is, why they're there.
And then they take all that information.
Yeah, and then they, they can address any questions to that tree warden.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Did we discuss, are we charging for this permit, or, because it just says that there's a permit, do we know what we want to do with that?
Oh, yeah, I think we discussed that, and I think we just came up with like twenty-five, a twenty-five dollar fee.
Yeah, we didn't really, right, we just came up with a number, but I don't know, we didn't really know how much other permits cost, so Arbor Commission doesn't have strong feelings, I don't think about that.
No.
And plus, that's a whole other ordinance, the permit ordinance.
And the tree warden would be collecting that fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, would we, or would we, would we just add that to our other licenses and permits, and it goes to the clerk's office?
It would be easier to go to the clerk's office for accounting purposes.
So would it go into-
Sue's giving me the side eye over here. Would it go into the general fund, then?
Yes.
Okay, and that's how all permits work, they go into the general fund, or do they go into the, the?
It would go into the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to talk, because I don't-
So for the-
Some have specialty designations, like Code will use some of their fees to pay for possible legal action later, or something like that.
Okay.
Enterprise fund.
Yeah, the enterprise, I believe, is the only one that goes separate.
Yeah, everything else goes to the general fund, and then it can be distributed during budget process, right, and all of this, the general fund.
I think regardless, when we do establish a fee for it, we don't want it to be any more than, I would say, that covers the cost of administration of the city, so I don't know if there's a way to delve into that a little bit when we get there, but, yeah.
I'm sorry, Sue, but, you don't have to use the chair if you don't want to.
Oh, God.
You tried, but you're off the hook now.
Lord knows, it's wheeling your way now, though.
What you should do, you got to step aside, Mike, Sue.
Yeah, I should, I should have thought of it.
So my question is, though, are you coming to us on the permit fee?
Yes, we will be doing that, actually, I'm going to be out of town, and it's going to be-
Ebony's doing it.
Ebony's going to be doing that, but that is something that we can add to that, and Ebony's done a good job in trying to kind of work out how much, or all the people that are involved in, in any license fees, and kind of take into account their time, so that is something that we can add on to that.
If you want to reach out to me, and we can kind of discuss what would go into the permit process from a tree warden's sampling, I'm happy to do that.
And we can take a look to make sure it's in line with other kind of administrative fees in the city, and add that, because that's coming in, I believe, in May, codes fees and other fees are coming, so we'll just add it to that.
Great. Along with the copy of like what you want for a permit and things, so that they know how to-
Cool. Okay.
All right, yeah. Thank you.
I was, I was just going to add that, to piggyback what Sue said, is that you, you should, I know, I know the tree warden is a volunteer position, so that changes the dynamic a little bit, but whenever we, or whenever I had been looking at reworking the fees in my office recently, I was taking into account the time it takes to go travel and look at it and everything, so I don't know if that's something you want to add, whether a volunteer-
It's not a volunteer.
Oh, it's not? Oh, okay.
It's the city manager.
Oh, it's appointed.
I mean, at this point, it's the city manager.
Could be you, if you're not careful.
I'm not an arborist, sorry. I'm many things, but not an arborist. So, no, so that, so that may, if they're a paid, I didn't, I missed that point, if they're a paid employee, we, I would strongly recommend that you take into time, take into consideration the time it takes them to go look at the trees, how long it takes them to do that inspection, every, all the admin, when you, when you figure out that fee schedule.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just found the permit, too, sorry. I didn't go through that part.
So it sounds like the main changes we will make to this document would be a permit issued by the tree warden, section 5.1, and?
9.1.
9.1, something, blah, 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 MRS, blah, blah, blah.
No, no, dot, dot, dot. I need to close this. Can I close the, the public hearing, so that, then we can continue the discussion? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Steve?
Yeah, I'm Steve Shays, you all know, resident of Ellsworth, and this is the first time I've had a chance to look at this ordinance tonight. My question is, has there been a, been a problem with trees in general, the way we're doing it now, with the city manager taking care of things? Have there been problems?
Do you want to answer that? I would just say that, that nobody that's trained to, to understand trees is really looking at trees at this point right now.
Has there been a problem?
I mean, yeah, I think sometimes trees might get damaged during construction or removed when they might not need to be removed, maybe.
Well, can't the city manager take care of that? If somebody removes a tree, it doesn't, it belongs to the city, that's pretty obvious there in a right of way.
This is how they do it now.
This is how they do it now. Now the city manager is the tree warden, has this to go by.
But why can't he continue to do that? Why do we need to appoint a new position?
We're not appointing a new position at this time. This is just approving the ordinance. We're not appro, the city manager is still the tree warden.
Really?
Yep.
Has been.
So you don't plan to create a new position?
Not in this budget cycle.
No, no.
It's more responsibility for people that already have positions.
There is the potential with the Parks and Recreation Director to take over that position, or later on, when there's more people in a Parks and Recreation Department. But right now, it's just the city manager.
Like, can you tell that by reading the ordinance? I would, I would say somewhere in the ordinance, you should say that the tree warden will be the city manager.
We do it every year when we appoint the positions, every year, and I think we do it in June or July.
June.
In June. That's when we appoint the city manager as the tree warden.
I just, I can see going down the road that this could grow into a very cumbersome department, a very expensive department, if we don't specify things and.
So this is an ordinance that we've had for a long, long time, and it's just, it's up, being updated because we have a committee that's interested in it, and an arborist, and on the, well, you were working on this before you got on the council. So this is really just bringing an ordinance up to date.
But it says in the ordinance that the tree warden will have forestry and/or arborist credentials.
We hope so, eventually, but not right now. It's not, and not in the next year, anyway, because it's not in the budget.
Well, I understand that, but. It just looks to me like it's a chance to, to grow a bureaucracy in a city that we don't need.
We're just planting the seeds now.
I think somewhere there should be some language that talks about the, the current situation where the city manager is tree warden, and he may, he could hire outside expert help if he needs to. Be a better definition, but maybe that's in the existing ordinance.
No, it's not.
Well, I think, anyway, I think this, it's the first time I saw this tonight. I may be not fully informed about it, but I think, hopefully, you're not gonna pass this tonight.
But to be determined after I close the public hearing.
It looks to me like it needs a little more work.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Grant made some good points.
And is this the second time?
This is the second time.
It was here in January, the first time. Okay.
Yep. This is the second time he's been to us.
Does anyone else like to speak? Okay. Public hearing is closed.
Are we able to move forward if Patrick's able to communicate specifically enough and makes sense to?
It could just be added a new motion.
To Steve's point, right now, we did put in there that we want the tree warden to be licensed and, I can't remember what my, the actual wording is here, but we won't be in violation with the manager that's currently, I don't, I certainly wouldn't want to.
Does that strip him up?
Right, I wouldn't want to, yeah, take that away. So.
Where does it say that?
At 3.1, the city council shall annually appoint a tree warden with forestry and/or arborist credentials.
Maybe just.
Comma, if possible. Well, that addresses that.
Or what's a credential, you know? Could be, Tabitha just says.
We can send, we can send Charlie to some kind of a class.
Wasn't there some discussion, and Mike, maybe you can answer this, is having somebody on the public works department be the arborist in order to take that away?
And we do, we do have an arborist on public works.
Almost.
Yes. Mike Harris, Public Works Director, so really simply, if you could just put the tree warden or his designee, because we do have an arborist on staff, we don't need to create a new position.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Thank you.
Okay, and then.
Is he officially certified now?
He's working towards that. I'm waiting to hear if he's passed, but yes.
Amazing. Thank you.
Great, that sounds good.
Good, thank, yeah, you brought a good point. I don't want to have Charlie not be able to.
I think the ordinance should be reworded to reflect those decisions.
That's what they're working on right now.
Yeah.
Well, except that if he stops working for the public works, we don't have one. So maybe.
Yeah, but if you say it's the tree warden or his designee, doesn't have to be the guy in public works, he could do exactly what he said. Bring somebody in from outside who thinks he can set for assistance, make him a designee. Or you could make the tree works steward a designee. You can make anybody he wants a designee.
Can we, for now, just put the city council shall annually appoint a tree warden, because it'll be up to you, to the Arbor Commission anyways, later on, to recommend to the, to the city manager and the council who would be on that position anyway. So I don't think it needs to say that it will, for now. Can we do that?
Don't just not have credentials?
Yeah, right. Just appoint a tree warden.
I mean, I think, just to speak for the Arbor Commission, I think, I hear what you're saying, and that is definitely one of the options. Part of the reason to redo the tree ordinance was to make sure that there was some kind of expertise in these decisions, because decisions have been made about the trees in Ellsworth in the past in ways that have been detrimental to the city and to the trees. So if there's a way to word it that maintains the idea that some expertise will be at least requested for decisions like this.
I think the difference now, though, is the, the city manager as a tree warden has the Arbor Commission to work with that has the expertise for now. And then if we do, down the road, hire a tree warden, the Arbor Commission will be the people that recommend it anyway. So I think, I think it still does it.
What about the language, comma, if possible, relating to the, the forestry or arborist credentials?
I just wonder.
It gets to it. We, we shall appoint a tree warden.
Right.
And then, comma, if possible, with forestry or an arborist credentials. So that makes it so it's not required, but it makes it, it's a clear indication that that's what we want it to be.
Okay.
I would propose, yeah, with that first sentence, the city shall annually appoint a tree warden, comma, and if possible.
With forestry and/or.
With forestry and arborist credentials.
That make, that gives the intent.
That gives the intent without forcing something if it's not possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
That's great, thank you.
I love commas.
So we have three changes?
Yeah, if it's helpful to summarize for the record, and unless there's further, well, let them see if the council wants to just.
We need a, we need a motion, anyway.
Yeah, so I would move that we adopt the amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 43, Tree Ordinance, subject to free revisions, the first being in Article 3.1, following the language, the city council shall annually adopt a tree warden. We insert a comma, and then, and if possible, before fifth forestry and arborist credentials. Second revision would be to section, Article 5.1. It says a permit following that, I would amend it to include issued by the tree warden. And then finally, in Article 9.1, where it states violations of this ordinance may result in fines and penalties, I would, we would amend it to include a comma, and then pursuant to 30-a MRS, section 4452.
Sorry, just one more fix was in the tree removal approval standards that you were gonna change that.
Yes, and then in the tree removal standards, section four, public notification and appeals, second bullet, the sentence, citizens may appeal tree removal decisions through the Arbor Commission. I would replace through the Arbor Commission with to the Board of Appeals. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excuse me.
All right, and now I'm on 14. Pretend to item 14. Council Order Number 042503 requests of the Public Works Director to amend the current contract with Northeast Paving to include mill and paving the Franklin Street Parklet.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mike Harris, Public Works Director. This is pretty straightforward. We bid and received the bids on our local roads. We ended up well under what we had anticipated to spend on the local roads, and so the thought process that came forward later was that the parklet would be a good candidate to try and get paid before the season this year. And so I'm coming before you to ask that we add, this is a change order to the local paving contract. Already spoke to Northeast, they've already looked at it, they gave me the bid on it, or they gave me the price on it. And so this is me asking to expend the additional funds out of the band to do that work.
And I would just say that during the budget process, we've really been thinking about ways to enhance the parklet, bring value to the parklet, and this was, seemed like a really easy way to spruce up the parklet, or I like to say zhuzh it up. So Northeast came and gave us a bid in line with the other bids that they've given on our local roads, so. And in the motion, it does say from the road improvement reserve account, but then in talks with Tammy, that would have required a public hearing. So I have some other funding options where it can come from easily, that I don't think would require a public hearing. I can go over those if you want me to.
Yeah, because we need to say where the money's gonna come from in the motion.
So for the FY25 ban bond, we've been talking a lot about that through the CIP, where I identified some capital improvement investments that could be allocated with that funding. So currently, there is an, a balance of $486,000, $486,000, sorry, remaining from the local roads portion of that. Even if we funded all of the items we identified in the CIP, we still would have over $100,000 left, even if we did that. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't impact those items at all.
If I may, so didn't we already approve this bid for Northeast paving? And you said we came in under?
We approved the bid for all the local roads we initially put out, yes, and we came in under. So we originally appropriated 2.1 million. The bids came in at 1.6 million.
So can it just come from that same?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's the 486. That's what's remaining.
That's, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I misunderstood.
That's what, well, I fumbled around on it a little bit.
Can I ask you, so how much is being paid for $26,000?
Just the extension of Franklin Street where the parklet exists.
Just between the two sidewalks?
It's between the two sidewalks, on the street side of the crosswalk up to, it goes up to the seal, where it kind of starts to go up into the parking lot, up to there.
155 by 40 feet, two inch, nine and a half millimeter, 76 ton.
That I got, but I didn't know what that meant. Sorry. That I understood, thank you.
It's great that this money exists, that we came under bid, and it's great that we want to spruce it up, zhuzh it up. It definitely needs something. I just wonder if this is, because we've been talking about the parklet for years, and it comes and goes, and different organizations have used it, and been proponents of closing it off in public and making it a big, beautiful thing. Is this the best use of it? I mean, is paving what we want to see happen for the future, or would it be better utilized as some other permeable surface? Is it, depending on how we want to use it? I know the recommission has had some ideas, I know Heart of Ellsworth has had some ideas for it. Is it picnic area? Is pavement the best, the best thing for it? Or does it have to be, since it's not going to be a permanent closure for a couple of years?
Exactly. That's exactly.
So fire trucks still have to go through.
Exactly.
Until we close it.
Yeah, if you close it and you want to change it, put cobblestones or some other beautiful thing in there, how about it? We'll make it happen. But for now, whether it's not permanent, yeah, we need, it needs to be able to have truck traffic and other traffic drive right over.
And this isn't gonna preclude any of that from happening? And this is not a long-term fix? This mill and fill, it's seven years, maybe?
I mean, the parklet's in bad shape. I mean, the pavement's in bad shape. We're gonna fix two basins down there before we pave it, because they need it. And so, yeah, it'd be a great addition for the downtown area, a great attraction. We can do whatever you want.
Well, I just wonder if, if we knew that a permanent closure was coming soon, we could maybe hold on to this 26.
I'm not aware of that. I mean, it's been talked about ad nauseam, I guess, but nobody's pulled the trigger on that quite yet, so.
Kind of, I'm thinking what you said, I would hate to pave that, and then two years later, dig up $26,000 worth of pavement because we want to do something different with it. I didn't, I didn't think about that.
Maybe Carr or someone has a.
It's in bad shape, though.
Did you want to speak, Carr?
I really do.
Okay.
We've been speaking on this for years, I feel like we finally can. Okay, so as many of you know, so Carr, Mano, Heart of Ellsworth, the Downtown Organization, many of us have been working on this project since before the pandemic. I will just sort of call back everyone's attention to Taste of Ellsworth, that started in 2018, I think it was, or maybe it was 17, I don't know, I can't remember now. But the whole concept of that was to frame up that space for it to eventually become a public space. Our design committee has been tirelessly working for almost, you know, eight, nine years. They've come up with a concept sketch for the space, did not want to get ahead of anyone, steal anyone's thunder, but those folks have been working for many years on this. We have a concept sketch that we really do want to share with the city, but I just, also, for the past few years, I've been doing a lot of sort of research with other main streets around the state that have similarly put, put together plans like this with the Downtown Organization as well as a municipality. And Westbrook is a, is a really great case study that we should all be considering. Here, we've got Stormwater, there, they had a transformer. The situation is a lot the same, theirs is done, and we have not even started ours yet. I don't really know when they started it, but. I don't really know when they started it, but their city manager, as well as their downtown organization, as well as their economic development director, has given us a couple of different documents that sort of talk about how they did it, really working with their downtown organization, lots of layer funding. But it's my understanding that the stormwater drainage system there is really broken, and really needs a lot of attention. And I feel very much so that I agree with Councilor Beal's statement, twenty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money to put into something that maybe hopefully in a year would be torn up. So I just encourage everyone to think kind of long and hard, and it feels weird to be speaking up about something like this, but we've been really quiet for a long time. And the last thing I do wanna say is, is that when these conversations happen at the city level, Heart of Ellsworth Design Committee will be up here bringing you guys cookies, coffee, anything. They just wanna be involved and engaged in this, and wanna be part of it, and we can help with funding, we can also help with. And there's been a couple of grants that we've had to pass on, that we know that we can write to help with funding, so please use us. Thank you.
I remember Jared from DOT speaking last year about doing a temporary closure with those white flappy posts, I believe they're called. Saying that that would needed to be the first step in the application process, and then they would review it and then see if they could do a closure. But that's gotta come from me, DOT.
This, this thought process that you're gonna shut the parklet in a year, I'm not gonna be on board with that because we haven't done anything to even start that process.
Well, that's, that's another discussion.
Yep.
Not that I wanna stop you from talking, but that, I think the question is right now, do we want to pave this now? Not under, not knowing what the future is for that part, for that area, that what we're going to do with it.
Can you do the stormwater work without repaving it?
Oh, yeah, no, we'll redo the basins and stuff, but we're gonna end up patching it, so. So we're gonna partially pave it when we do that, just to patch in what we took out.
Is there any, I don't recall exactly what the condition is, but, you know, will it, if we don't pave it for one more year, will we be risking in any way, safety issues?
No, I mean, it's just, it's like a lot of the streets that haven't been paved in a long time, it's just got some frosty, a little bit of that going on, but it's not gonna collapse on us that I know of or anything, so we're good.
Would this option stay on the table for another month? We try to get some more information between now and then, or would they have other?
We'd have to go back to Northeast because the bid's only good for thirty days, so we'd, but we, I don't, I don't think it would be a big issue. And we did ask Northeast to look at kind of pavement alternatives to just, but they don't really offer anything. They're a paving company, so they don't really offer anything like that. I think the thought from staff was that, you know, it's pretty low, is it, I definitely hear you on investing on something that we might just rip up in a couple of years, that feels not good. But I think staff was thinking, we really wanna promote use there, it's a pretty, you know, quick fix to make it look better. We're gonna do some other things in the area to make it look better, but we can look at other pavement alternatives and the cost. It's gonna be more than twenty-six thousand for sure for other pavement alternatives, but we can definitely look into that and bring that back.
Does it, oh, go ahead, all right, does it have to be milled and paved? Because the unit price is really high for the, for, it's sixty-two hundred square feet compared to the cost of the police department lots, it's like a lot.
It's all based on quantities, a smaller quantity.
Small quantity.
And it's not just, so that number, just so everybody knows, that number that you look at, that, that unit price, so that three hundred and fifty dollars, that's not just for the pavement, that's for everything that goes into paving that space. So when you look at that number, yeah, if you told me, you're gonna spend three hundred and fifty dollars a ton for this pavement that you're gonna put in, it's a saved pavement, I'm putting up on Ballybrook Road, that's not the case. The case with it is, it's a very small quantity, there's gonna be a lot of handwork that needs to be done, all of that is included in this unit price to get this work done.
And the only other, not concern, but just, just to note, if we delay, is that we won't get it paved now, to be used. Because Northeast was gonna shift the schedule because they're kind of coming in here and there around other paving projects for some of our other local roads. They were gonna prioritize this and pave this like.
Before Memorial Day, hopefully.
Yeah, so that would be the only other thing with delaying.
Just, I personally would rather wait and, and work with Heart of Ellsworth, get great money to, to really make that a special place and not put twenty-six thousand dollars into this at this point, when we don't know what we're gonna do.
I agree, I think, I mean, I like the idea of paving it and improving it, but considering, so there are considerations that seems prudent to hold off. I don't know if there's more road, we can put that twenty-six thousand dollars into elsewhere.
No, there's definitely. I mean, I've already identified a bunch of stuff for next year, depending on how we plan on attacking our stuff next year, so. So, yeah, there's no lack of need for additional paving in Ellsworth, so.
Yeah, I think if we hadn't gotten into this conversation, we'd be like, great, you know, that sounds like a really good use of it, but it seems like it's prudent to hold off a little bit.
So maybe what we can do is come back at the May meeting with kind of a plan for this year, talk to Heart of Ellsworth, see what they have for ideas, come back with what we are gonna do to zhuzh it up this year. If it's not paving, what, you know, I think that we thought about picnic tables, lighting, other things to make it more inviting and a more usable space. So I know Carr and I have a meeting tomorrow, so this will be number one on the agenda. And we'll come back in May with some ideas to talk about that maybe are low cost, and to build momentum kind of of this year, next year, three years, what it looks like.
I think it's a great idea.
Does it make sense to get the quote again so that it's still valid in case you come back in a month and say, it looks like we won't be able to do anything?
We really wanna pave this, we can, sure, I mean, that's just.
I'll call it right.
It's gonna be probably the same, I don't think it's gonna be any different.
It won't be done in the city by then anyway, by next May?
No.
By next May.
By May, no, 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 no. I mean, we're, we're jamming pretty hard right now to get as much as we can get done now before May, because when May starts, that's when they're gonna get pulled off and big, big stuff, so. So that's why we're trying to prioritize and get city streets that are really, an emphasis and heavy traffic and well-used in the summer to be as best as, and then the state Little League tournament, we wanna make sure that was gonna be good for that, so. That'll be, that'll be a huge event.
Thanks for thinking like that and doing all this work.
Creative ideas.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. So do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm liking what I'm hearing, and that isn't usually the case. But I just, I just wanted to, and, because obviously, there's been a change of heart and maybe a better thought planned, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process here. I, it sounds like we're not gonna jump at this tonight, which is great, but I, I don't think rushing into this plan is gonna serve anybody well in the long term, and I think measuring a few moments of, of instant gratification could be expensive in the long run. And I'm troubled with not putting the process out to bid. We have a fifteen thousand dollar policy, that anything over fifteen thousand goes out to bid. And the bid process that went through earlier this year, there was problems, I fielded many calls from many angry custo, any angry contractors, that they were blocked out of this process. And by the way, the bid was written. So it went out to bid, and in rough numbers, there was two bids of the five. One contractor come in at one point nine million, one come in at one point seven million, and they threw out all the bids, which is fine. I went to the city manager and asked to know who bid, what the bids were, and I was denied that information. But I was given the information when the next bid was gonna come out. And the next bid came out, and the one point nine million dollar bid turned into a one point six million dollar bid. And I'm, I'm using these numbers in a round form, not exact. And so we're at one point six million, it was approved, everyone's happy, they were getting some paving done, and it's long overdue, and we need to do more for sure. But to jump at, because the bid was less than what we thought, to jump at just reworking or handing this contractor an extra piece for twenty-six thousand, I believe, whatever it happens, if it's over fifteen thousand, it needs to go out to bid. And I don't think it's gonna happen this year, but I think we need to abide by that procurement policy, which hasn't always been the case. But I really think that throwing money at that is short-sighted. I'm not saying that it can't be done another year, it's been that way for several years now. And put it into the long-term thinking, there's many roads in the town that need to be paved. If that's one priority that you decide to do, that's fine, but put it in next year's bid. Let's not just hand out twenty-six thousand dollars to the guy that's in town. That would be my thinking, and I'm liking what I'm hearing, a more thoughtful process, but I don't like this handing out work over the procurement policy, I don't think that's fair.
If I remember correctly, don't the bids also ask for the possibility of additional projects when they bid on it?
They do.
But not this one.
No, specific projects that come up, that's how they.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna really get into a huge debate over this.
No, it didn't hit three other places, but not this one.
What I would say is, I don't know then what the policy is on change orders, because change orders happen in a lot of contracts. And sometimes change orders happen that are over the amount of money that, that fifteen thousand. Like if I have a change order on the High Street Pump Station project, that Apex is gonna be doing for me, and it's over fifteen thousand dollars, there's no way that we would legitimately put out to bid a section of the High Street Pump Station project while the other contractor's doing the work.
But you're not adding to it.
If it was a change order.
Change.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that's, that's the way it was, that's the way it came to me, this was the request that was made of me, and that's the way I handled it.
It's okay, yeah, it's okay, and thank you for bringing, this is, this is absolutely perfect, it gave us an opportunity to, to discuss this and to get more information, so thank you, appreciate that.
So Michelle, we just need to reject this bid?
Yeah, you just, I need a motion to reject the, there you go.
Move to reject the change order from Northeast paving in the amount of twenty-six thousand six hundred for paving of the Franklin Street parklet.
Second.
I'm sorry, it, it's rejecting the, the request of the Public Works Director, not the change order. It's the, it's the whole thing itself.
Rejecting you, Mike.
Yeah, you're rejecting it, that's all right. Not the first time, won't be the last time, it's okay.
What we're saying, yeah, because we're rejecting the request of paving the parklet, not.
Okay, I was just reading from the motion, so.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, no, here, finally, Ben, man? Good, okay.
Second.
Do you have the verbiage?
Got it.
Okay, additional discussion?
Wait a minute, can you tell me what we're voting on here?
We're rejecting the request from this.
Public Works.
Public Works Director for.
Paving the parklet.
Paving the parklet.
Paving the parklet.
That was your motion, and someone seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Hey, why vote him with everybody, imagine that.
It's like a double negative.
Item number fifteen, Council Order number zero four two five zero four, discussion and action on the request of the city manager to approve the annual reports for affordable housing tax increment financing districts.
I believe this is just an annual report we have to submit to the state that finance is put together, the report is included in the packet. It's just an accountant, accounting of what we have for our affordable housing tax increment financing districts.
It's just an annual housekeeping requirement, basically, to let main housing authority know that we have this.
If we make changes to this, as we've talked about in the middle of this cycle, or does that matter? Can we still use TIF funds if they're different from what we've submitted? We would just submit the changes next year?
Yeah, that's my understanding, we would just have to update it for the next report.
You have to update the plan itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In order to, it's very involved, it's, that's the consultant thing that. Yep.
So this is more of this housekeeping, and to your knowledge, is there anything we should be worried about?
No, I talked to finance and Charlie, and we went through the, the law requirements, it didn't change from last year, it's all the same.
Motion.
Move to approve the annual reports for tax year April one, two thousand twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for affordable house, affordable housing tax increment financing districts Leonard Lake, Oriole Way, and Oriole Way Senior in the City of Ellsworth.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, item sixteen, discussion and action on the request of the city manager to allocate tax increment financing funds for consulting services for review and possible changes to the current TIF district plan, the city's capital improvement plan and certain city ordinances.
So this came up during the budgeting process, when we identified some areas that we would probably need some consulting help on, and when we went, reviewed the TIF districts and what was authorized to be used for funding, what we could use that on. We thought we would move these out of the general fund and try to use them with our TIF funding. So this is really to work, work towards implementing the comprehensive plan, the housing needs assessment, and the business attraction plan, and the memos here that support that, I believe they were also in the budget book, but to review the TIF districts and realign them and possibly create additional TIF districts to work on the CIP, which I've been working on. That is, as Tammy knows and Michelle knows, a very large task to identify and look at all the city assets and look at replacement plans for those and investments in budgeting for those, and then the policy and ordinance review. Those documents I talked about, the comprehensive plan, the business attraction plan, and the housing task force plan, there are like thirty areas within those that speak to ordinance and how they would have to be changed or updated to support the implementation of those. So Robert in the codes office is really stretched very thin, and, you know, would be helpful to have some expertise in that area to expedite that process. So Charlie identified the TIP, the TIF funding and the surplus that we have that's been undesignedated to use to get those consultants jump-started in this fiscal year, not have to wait also for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
We would request proposals for all of these consultants, correct?
Yes, the one that we have kind of gone back and forth, it's the capital, because in the procurement policy, there is a section specifically that speaks to engineering services, and the capital plan would be an engineer, an engineering service. So, but we can put them out to bid, that's no problem, we can put them all out to bid.
I think it would be, I think it'd be the best.
Yep.
To be able to do that.
I, I mean, I'm in support of it, the, you know, the, I think it's a good time for us to reevaluate our TIF districts and the programming, and considering the surplus, you know, and I know a stretched staff is, that, you know, to throw more look at you, where you can get a consultant, an expert, rather than having to hire some, you know, additional staff at the city to do this work, is important. TIFs can be complicated, and I know they're not well-understood by everyone, which is fair, because it is complex. But ultimately, if they're done right, they can be a really effective tool for a municipality to both improve, you know, promote development while also actually helping mitigate increases to taxes and, or, you know, mitigate losses of revenue sharing and de, and mitigating impacts of county taxes to us. So I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm very much in support of moving forward with this. So, I think it's a great opportunity and I'm very much in support of moving forward with this.
It's time to public hearing. But would you like counsel?
I would move to authorize the city manager to allocate surplus funds from the city's economic development tax increment financing, or TIF, account for the purpose of securing consulting services related to, one, the review and potential amendment of the city's current TIF district development program; two, an update to the city's capital improvement plan with a focus on economic development readiness; and three, policy and ordinance review related to housing and business development. These consulting services shall be funded from surplus TIF funds consistent with the city's adopted TIF district plan. The city manager shall ensure that all expenditures comply with the plan's allowable uses and provide the city council with updates as the work progresses and RFPs are reviewed and selected for final approval by council.
Second.
Discussion?
For the public, how much are we, is in surplus right now? Because at some point, I thought there was like 170,000.
That's what I thought it was, too.
Um, well, he, in the memo, it says over 100 in surplus, so I can find out the specific number. Nate's not on tonight, I'm sorry, because he would be able to whip that number right out.
I do feel like it was 170,000.
I thought it was 170,000.
I just, for the public.
I'll look that up while you guys are discussing.
Additional discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
You were too quick, sorry.
That's okay. I'm, I'm pretty sure it was 170,000.
Yeah, I think it was, too.
We don't have the audit yet to verify that. Hopefully, we will. Oops. Item 17, Executive Session Pursuant to One, MRSA 4056D to Discuss Labor Negotiations Between the City of Ellsworth and the Ellsworth Police Association Affiliated with the Main Association of Police - MAP. Motion to go into executive session?
So, moved.
Missed one?
Did I miss one?
Yeah. Oh, there are two TIF ones.
The 16.
That's the one we just did. No, we just did 16.
The annual reports was that.
That was the second.
Oh, yeah.
Sending it.
All right.
All right, yeah, we did the, we did the...
Sorry, my mistake.
That's okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA 4056D, et cetera.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
And a break.
And a break.
Item 18, Discussion and Action on Labor Negotiations Between the City of Ellsworth and Ellsworth Police Association, Affiliated with the Main Association of Police. Matt?
I move that we approve the contract negotiated with the police union for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028, as proposed.
Second, discussion? I would like to say that, for the record, that Tammy Moat has recused herself. All right, all in favor? Thank you. Item number 19, adjournment.
So moved.